Good morning, everyone, and we'll go ahead and call it an order, the December 12th Board of Commissioners meeting. Thank you, everyone, for being here. All right, this morning for our opening prayer, we got Father Sadaka from St. Peter's Catholic Church. Father, you want to come up to the podium? You didn't run here from Montgomery, did you? You're a runner.
I don't know what to say.
Good to see you.
Good morning, guys, good morning, everybody. So, let's bow our heads for God's grace. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Good and gracious Lord, we give you thanks, praise, glory, and honor, everything that is due to your powerful name, because your name has come from a bowl, and in your name there is salvation and there is power. And thank you, Lord, for gathering each one of us here for this meeting. As you said, you came into this world to serve, not to be served. Practically every one of us gathered here is at the service of your people and your community. As they're giving their all, their best, their abilities, their talents, to make the lives of the people living in this community better, we ask you to fill them with your graces and with your blessings and with your wisdom, so that they will be able to, they will be able to give their best, their all, to make the lives of everyone much more better and so on. And as we are approaching for your birth, continue to fill with your graces, so that we may able to prepare ourselves interiorly and outwardly also, to celebrate your birth, which is a great blessing for every one of us. We make this prayer through Christ our Lord, amen. The Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Thank you, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you for being here. All right, next up, on the last Thursday, I believe it was, December the 7th, we had an administrative meeting. Grant, is there anything we need to enter into the record for that?
So, an administrative meeting is just where administrative tasks are discussed related to, from specific. The only thing that was talked about at that meeting was the administrative tasks related to the courthouse renovation. So, if there are questions, please follow up.
Thank you. Everyone should have received a copy of the November 28th Board of Commissioner minutes. Were there any changes that anyone saw?
Oh, man.
No. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So, moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
My motion passes three zero. Morning, Chris, how are you?
Good, Chris.
Fine, morning. We got a little bit of information, nothing real pressing, but I do want to, under project updates, I do want to, I turned it in electronically to the auditor's office, but I got two papers to talk about turning in for a grant that we're pursuing, we've talked about. So, I've got the paperwork done and submitted, but it's the grant for the old Highway 50 upgrade from the relinquishment that we took over from the state. And one of them is the, basically this is the contract purpose, is the funding for the old US Highway 50, County Road 150 West roundabout. The total amount is $4,865,000. 90% federal dollars reimbursable, $4,378,500. With our 10% local match, is expected to be $486,500. That's to put a roundabout at that intersection. And then the other one is for the funding on old US Highway 50, bridge improvements, there's a bridge on there that needs rehabbed, and County Road 300 West from the old US 50 to the bypass. So, the total funding on that is an amount of $5,522,500. I said I didn't say that quite right. And that's an 80% federal dollars, matches $4,418,000. With our 20% local match, $1,104,500. That would be, I gotta get my notes to make sure I tell you guys right. That will be construction dates of 2030. So, some of the stuff will start, the preliminary engineering will start in 2024, this coming year, if we're awarded the grant. We're hoping to, I think it's favorable for what we're wanting to do, because we're technically wanting to do the same thing that NDOT was wanting to do, to that intersection and to that right, or that roadway. So, that would be facilitating the grant through the federal government. So, on part of that grant, though, we, we have to pay, and then we're reimbursed on a 30-day. The matching portion of that grant.
It's a 30-day.
Reimbursed.
We just swap the cash for 30 days, okay?
Yeah. So, we'll have to, I guess, talk to you guys and talk to the council about funding through some of the construction dates. So, I've got the money with the $2.5 million we got for taking over the relinquishment. We've got the money to pay our local match. But there will be a little bit of money that, that we want to pay, and we get back. So, like in 2030, we will probably have to be budgeting for an extra million dollars.
Yeah, construction, yeah.
Well, where's that money parked at, invested at?
It's just in a CD.
So, a 4% or 5% CD?
4.9, I believe, is what it is.
All right, well, over, over six years, there's your, there's your million, or there's your 700,000.
We should get like $120,000 a year. But we, we kept, we kept $500,000 out of it to do construction right now to maintain that infrastructure. So, we got $2 million invested.
Well, it's 120 the first year, it'll be like 135.
Well, yeah, yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll keep that in there and keep investing.
It'll be about a million dollars in interest, okay?
Yeah. So, I think the year that we might need to make sure, and when, by then, we'll start planning in the highway department's budget too, for that project, so by then, we might have some of our funds available to pay the, pay the, whatever it's called, I don't know what it's called, pay it and get it back.
Sure.
I'm not real professional.
Well, you were too.
I know what I'm doing, believe me.
Very clear, yeah. Okay, great. Well, these are the fun projects where we get to sign up for them and future commissioners get to do them, so these are the good ones.
And we've got our, we've got our pavement asset management certified from LTAP, and, and our bridge asset management, I've got them letters completed. So, that's what qualifies us for being able to pursue those federal dollars.
Well, great job to you and to Phil at the highway department for getting that asset management plan put together a number of years ago. It was a tremendous amount of work, but that reorganization allows us now to qualify for all these grants and to run our assets efficiently.
Yeah. Yeah, I just kind of continued on what Phil and I believe Larry Maslin had started. And then at the, at the next meeting, I'll give you guys the update I told you about. It'd be along with that asset management, it tells us what our county roads, what shape they're in compared to other county, compared to the state, compared to all entities in the state, and of course, how many miles of road that we've worked on and all that. So, I'll give you that stuff. A couple of other updates, the salt sand building, they are pouring concrete, Michael. I know last time you come by, they weren't pouring concrete.
Yeah.
But they've been out there since last week pouring concrete. So, I'd say they, they're supposed to have the concrete done by the end of the year, and then the first of the year, they'll start the framing, and I think we give them till March to have it all done, I can't remember, we said that at the last meeting.
So, they got the permission, the state's all done?
They got all the permitting done, and they are working. So, I don't see anything that.
Slow them down now.
Unless we get a really bad snowstorm right now, but.
They just have to get around a roof.
Yeah.
Real quick, just for the old salt building, we're still receiving any interested parties that want to participate in, kind of buy that through the 26th of this month, so.
We, we've met a couple of people over there to let them in the building, to let them look around at the building, but as far as our, our involvement, that's all I've really done. I think they're contacting you guys or putting in their bids, but then somebody would contact us and ask us if we could let them in to look at the building.
Is there anything else left under, Chris, that the county has that's not the highway departments?
I think Scott Schnair might have some stuff in there.
Okay.
It's not.
Not a lot.
Not much, it's kind of junk, but it's just old stuff that.
Is it junk to Scott, or is it?
Well, it's probably junk to him, too, that's why it's down there.
Found another man-staffed junk on the public record, that's very brave.
A couple of other projects, on the Odin West Street project, I've sent you guys an email on that, and I think Grant's been involved in that. So, now we are in talk with the clerk treasurer of Odin about helping them to facilitate their, their project, and for us to be involved in it, to where we don't have one big lump sum of money coming out from our budget in the course of one year, so you guys can continue to fund and facilitate other projects at the same time, with your commitment to helping them.
That calling's 2027?
Yeah, they, they moved it back. The, I think the, I actually got some paperwork on that. I think it was, I think it was 2026. It was going to be built in 2025, and so they moved it back to 2026.
Okay.
The, the state has got involved, they're going to facilitate the, the intersection there, 358 and West Street, and I think they're taking that out of the overall project, and they are going to pay for that and.
That'll lower the cost, yeah.
That'll lower the cost. It wasn't by as much as what we would have liked, but it's better than nothing. So, so by them getting involved to do that, that pushed it back a year, because they needed a little bit more engineering done. So, we'll be able to start contributing, as you guys agreed upon, and the council agreed upon, to help them without making it one big hit to the county all in the same year.
Right.
The Raglesville curve, we've started doing some basically preliminary engineering on that, work on that, so that'd be 1,000 north and 1070 east. It's a tight curve through there, and the truck traffic keeps getting off in the ditches, and I'd say the sheriff's department's probably been called a couple of times to go man that while they pull them out.
Hurriers out of the ditches, yeah.
So, the, the first step of the project is we're, we're going to, and the county highways doing the work, we're going to.
You got all the rightaways and everything?
Yeah, we've been talking to the landowners, and, and they've all, so far, everybody's agreed to let us do what we need to do, which is basically cutting into people's property and removing some landscaping with, we'll reconstruct it for them, redoing some drainage. We will put the, put rock in there and probably leave it set with the rock for a year, and then in the hopes of maybe next year or the year after, you know, when we get this done, we'll have to reconstruct the curve, re-blacktop it, we don't want to just leave a big.
Right.
Rock driveway in front of somebody's house. And I, I've talked to Bob Drew with the Economic Development Corporation about the GPC road from the bypass 50 going south to the GPC. So, I think you guys are all aware of it, that's about a three-quarter mile of a stretch of a 50-foot wide road. That, actually, it needs striping, that's what brought it up. And Derek Clark is here, he actually mentioned that to me today, to you, that he had a concern. So, that, that was good, that some of the things that we're concerned about and working on is things that everyday vehicle driver is concerned about also. So, he's, he's going to ask his board about helping to fund that, and I don't know, Nathan's on that board, or?
Yeah, a quick update, we had a board meeting last week, so they're going to look and see if there's any extra funds in that GPC TIF fund that, that should be funding it. So, that's step one, and then I, I ask about some of the other funds that we have, that, some of the other investments that we made at EDC and some of the proceeds from those other funds, if there's not enough, but, and then I, 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 I said I would reach out to you and to see what, you thought the overall project was going to be, what do you think the cost was going to be?
Right.
And then, and then let's, you know, cost share it in some, some fashion.
Yeah.
I didn't expect them to be able to pay for the entire amount, it sounded like it was going to be fairly pricey, but I needed to get those new amounts and what exactly we need.
I think the initial estimate was about $250,000.
$250, okay.
Because it'd have to be milled out, and during some conversations, some people maybe thought that it didn't look that bad, the road didn't look bad, so EMB paving, or not EMB paving, it's actually milestone paving, they were in the area doing some work for our CCMG grant, and so I asked one of their estimators to go down there and look at the road and see what they thought was wrong with it. Of course, these guys paved, so there's maybe a lot wrong with it, but, but they basically had the, they had the same scenario or the same verdict that I had, what needed to be done to the road to bring it up. We, we can't let that road fall apart.
So, on, on the 250, was, is this the, is to the entrance of GPC, or is this the?
This was actually, so that was, it was to the southern employee parking lot.
Okay.
So, it goes, it goes about three-quarters of a mile past County Road 150 South, past the, the north main entrance to GPC. It goes just a little bit, bit of paths that are about 50-foot wide, and then after that, it goes down to 20-foot wide.
That was my, that was my question, so this 250 services the entire GPC corp, and doesn't go down into non-GPC?
Right.
Okay, good enough.
Yeah, and I, I mean, if it was just a regular county road, it just, that takes a big chunk out of our everyday maintenance for, for all county roads, for that one particular road.
Yep.
You know, so.
We'll have a meeting at 11:30 today, so I'll, I'll follow back up with that.
Yeah, I just, I didn't know, I don't want to say I don't think that's fair, I just didn't think it was fair to come out of our everyday dollar for that massive infrastructure. Um, most county roads are just 20-foot wide.
Okay.
The equipment, I was going to bring up some equipment, one of them was the, the dump trucks that Grant had called and talked to somebody, Evansville Truck Centers, I don't know if I'm supposed to say names or not, but they, they couldn't, they couldn't get our trucks or whatever. I didn't know, they, they said they were going to call back, and they've not called back. So, we had funds, when we bid that out, they bid the trucks, and now, basically, they're not producing the trucks, and I don't know where we stand or where we think we want to go from that.
Have you checked on any, anywhere else, is there any trucks available anywhere right now?
There, there is trucks available. Most of it would be going through the Sourcewell Company, which is basically a big buying group that buys and sells things to counties and helps them get it. Our trucks are a little bit different, when we get trucks, we've got to.
What are you specing, you mean?
Yeah. We've got to get trucks that's got hydraulics on it for the sanders in the back and for our snowplows. You know, I can't just go out and buy, buy a truck.
Right.
So, it is harder to get trucks to, to do what we need them to do, to be able to have the hydraulics on the front and on the back and the dump beds and everything.
Where, where are we at legally on that? They bid it, they say they're going to get us a truck, and they don't, and then he checks on another truck, they're going to raise the price, or they locked into that, where do we stand on that?
That's what's going to happen, we're, we're a year and a half out now.
We've got a bond, got a bond in place that we could potentially pursue that works like, works like liquidated damages if we, we don't. But, you know, it's also a policy decision as to whether or not juice is worth the squeeze, and if we want to do something about it or try to get somewhere else, or what we want to do.
I, I believe there, I do believe the reasoning for not being able to provide trucks as far as just the way the economy is, yet it's not fully back. There's a lot of people that can't get trucks, so I believe that if they had all the trucks they can get to supply all their customers, they would give them to us.
Well, I agree, but the communications.
The communication was.
So, let's stay on them, see if we can get a truck at the price, and then let's see what that delta is, and we'll see if that's worth pursuing. But then at some point, we need to determine when do we just cut that entire transaction and just start from scratch.
Yeah, and some of that, you know, I aggravated, if, if we knew they weren't going to get us the trucks, and they would have communicated better, the funds that we had for the trucks, you know, we're tying up dollars and not doing anything, and we've got other equipment needs that, that we can get, we were going to get in 2024.
Okay.
That we could have swapped them around a little bit, so.
Got it. All right, we'll keep us posted on that track, so we can get that thing wrapped, wrapped up.
I never did ask, did you get your pickups yet, or you got?
Yes, we did get our pickups. It took a while, but we got our pickups, I've got, I've actually got, I've put together a list, I think we're still on the same, email, the same list that I give the council and you guys about our equipment needs coming up. We, we still need one more mechanics part truck. We need two road graders, the road striping machine, a broom, and we do have a distributor truck on order. We're supposed to get it at the end of the second quarter in 2024, and we've got the funds already this year, we'll encumber over.
Your broom, though, you got low hours in your broom, right, the one you got now?
Yeah, it just, it don't have a blade on it.
And so, it's, I mean, it still has a lot of value.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'd like to get a, a broom with a blade on the front.
On it, yeah.
So, when, actually, I was talking to Commissioner Gabhart about shoulder on the, on the roads. That's a hard thing to facilitate, keeping that shoulder on the road. We got a truck that has a box in the back of it, rock comes out, goes in the shoulder, broom with a blade on the side of it follows it and edges off the rock off the blacktop and puts it where it needs to go.
Lot less destructive on the blacktop than the road grader.
Do what?
Lot less destructive.
Yes, yes.
Than the road grader.
Yes, because the, the other option we have is to follow it with a road grader, and they're heavy, and you put them on the, the side of the road, it tears it down.
Yeah.
Chris, can you talk about the solar ordinance, just a minute or two here, just our conversation and what your, what your thoughts were?
I can.
Actually, we're probably going to bounce that up to this, if you guys are okay with that, number 16. I know, I think I saw Sarah just walk in, we'll go ahead and, good morning, Sarah. We'll go ahead and talk about solar ordinance, the highway.
At the same time, yeah.
At the same time.
Chris had some concerns with the roads, yeah.
Um, yeah, I'll probably say too much and get myself in trouble like people.
No, you're fine, because we, we had, we had the same conversations when we talked about I-69, so you're fine.
Yeah. Now, the, the solar ordinance, I know we've been doing a solar ordinance, and a lot of time, a facility like a solar field is being facilitated by county government, EDCs, city of Washingtons, and, and so they kind of facilitate with these companies to come in and do this, this project, and sometimes the little things get left out, like road bonding. So, they come in and do that work, and, you know, thousands of trucks, hundreds of trucks are in and out on the roads, hauling equipment in and out, hauling trash to our landfills, and most of that stuff is probably Grant-oriented and funded, a lot of them big projects like that, but it does put a stress on our county infrastructure, and we're just looking not to make any money off of them, but to be able to fix the damage that's done to the infrastructure. And so, I'd ask Grant if he could put some road bonding agreements in there. I know they actually did a solar field out by, out by my house, and luckily, it was on sand, so there wasn't a lot of road damage. There, there was a little bit of road damage, but the whole thing, I think, was facilitated by the city of Washington. So, the contractor comes in, and I'm out there talking to them about what they're doing and what they're not supposed to be doing, and they don't have any permitting, they don't have any permitting with us. The roads are getting tore up, the ditches are getting drug in by their equipment. We're continually getting phone calls from neighbors about the drainage, about the road. They start putting a new power line in, back towards the city to hook it up to the grid. Power poles, they, we do let them use the county right away, but they need to be placed in the vicinity of the existing pole, or you need to get a permit if it's a new line, and by putting in the vicinity of an existing pole, if the poles are here, they've got to stay in that line. If the pole's here and you put it a foot or two closer to the road, that's, that's really not acceptable, and that's some of the things that was happening. And I talked to Randy Ennis with the, with the city of Washington, he's the power and light guy, and you go around Camptons, which is a narrow corridor.
Yeah.
And the power poles are two or three feet off the road, and then you put a power pole between that and the road. You know, our concern is vehicle safety. People are going to make mistakes, people are going to run off the road. What we want to do is minimize the impact it could have to their, their lives or their vehicles.
So, the, the addition that we made, just to try to frame this, is adding that there's appropriate highway permits. There's already a discussion within the ordinance, in the, the one that was previously floated out about road use agreements, but we added language that just says appropriate highway department permitting, something along those lines. And that should work for what you're talking about, is that correct?
Yeah, they, they know to contact us for the appropriate permitting. We will get that to them, and they will sign it. That permitting would come with bonding.
Chris, on that bonding, I know we had trouble with I-69, because there was so much truck traffic. They built the bridges first, then came back and built the main line, so there's tremendous amount of truck traffic and equipment traffic and everything else on there. I, I would suggest to hire a third party to come inspect that road ahead of time. If you have, if we have a big bonded project for a solar. Have them inspect that road and have them inspect it afterwards, because at the time, we actually just videotaped the roads. Well, the videotape didn't show.
Yeah, the videotape.
What the damage was, you know what I mean? So, I, I think we need to have a third-party inspection on, on a big project when it gets bonded. Have them come out and inspect that road, then when the project's completed, where those bonds are released, make sure that, you know, everything's still in place where it should be. That means our, our word against their word, it's their, their party saying something about it.
We, we went, the last one I did was down south, down in Offordsville. I went out there with the, the guy, and I can't think if it was IPNL, they were putting a new power line across the, the river, and they were going down there by Hawthorne's 825 East.
Yeah.
And anyways, we went out there together, ran the road, you know, noted some conditions of the road, and then they bonded the road, and they bonded the gravel road. And then after their job was done, we went out there, drove it together, and actually, the guy didn't want to drive it together, he just, he thought I was an honest person, so he took my word, but then.
This time.
Yeah, this time. But not any one truck was, was overweight, and not any one truck was over width, but they were bringing 500 trucks in.
Yeah.
I'm going to pull this in just a little bit, we've got quite a lengthy agenda today. Clearly, we need to protect our road and our infrastructure in the solar ordinance, so that's kind of the overall point of the solar ordinance.
So, the, the ordinance that's been floated out was approved by the Advisory Plan Commission. It'll be, it's advertised for public hearing at your next meeting in two weeks, and I don't know if Sarah had any other things that she wanted to say, but Sarah, if you could come back on the 26th, or, or if you don't, if you can't make it, that's fine, too. But essentially, it's, it's been vetted, approved, the only addition that was made was, from what was approved, was adding that highway department permitting.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, their permitting policies, just have everything in there, yeah.
I just want to explain the reasoning why I hope it.
It's great, great explanation, no.
I've got two questions. The city annexes property out here.
Yes.
Solar field, does that make them responsible for any of the roads?
On a utility annex, it could go both ways, but the agreement that they got with the county makes them not, not responsible. So, they, they didn't assume any responsibilities of the ditches or the road.
Okay, and then on this ordinance, and I was contacted by a firm that's looking at a big project in Davis County, one of the recommendations they made is to adopt the solar energy-ready community standards. Is there a reason why we didn't do that? And I'm not familiar with the standards, but it's a state, state code, so that allows you to be certified.
So, it's language that we included, and we're close to those standards. It's kind of a new thing, which is why we, we tried not to do two things at once, trying to get an ordinance passed, that's kind of what bogged us down in getting this passed over the last year. But solar-ready communities is, and maybe Sarah wants to speak to that or doesn't want to speak to it.
I think it's the certification that down the road may lead to grant money.
Right.
Grant funding.
Funds can come back for whatever kilowatt-hours.
Yeah.
Are, whatever kilowatt-hours are produced within the county, we can get some funds back, but. We're trying to get this done, and then.
If the company asks for it to be in there, then I would say they probably have information we don't have, but if we can come back and pick it up, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I think, I think that's kind of. Yeah, I think I think that's kind of generally the mindset. And I think there's still apprehension of, you know, we don't want to say we're anti-solar, but you know, how many of these do we want? What's the side effects of having these things? And there's still a lot of unknowns. So we want to get the solar ordinance passed and enacted, protect our assets. And then if we need to make them solar-ready, once we see that we're protecting all the current homeowners, that's my main concern with this, is all of the homeowners need to be protected with their property value. And then wherever these things can go, so be it. So I think I think this is pretty methodical, really want to thank Sarah. I don't know how many emails I said, whatever Sarah says, I'll go with. But because she's so intelligent on many things, but especially this, so appreciate your help.
Thanks, Chris.
Chris, thank you.
Thank you.
So did we, so that solar ordinance will come back to us on the 26th for official action?
Yeah.
All right, next up, we got Derek Clark. Derek, can you come up to the podium? Derek has been involved on the Hobbie 50, 257 intersection and some of the enhancements that stoplight and so forth that's been made. He just wanted a few minutes to to address the commissioners.
Good morning.
Morning.
Over the past 10 years and one month, there was a little boy killed at 257 and 50 intersection, Noah Bergman. And it's still, it's gets to me just to talk about this intersection and this little boy, but I'm going to do it. Over the past 10 years, I petitioned this body and NDOT to make changes, serious changes. And we have done that. As a community, we have made changes at that intersection. Noah's death has been the last fatality at 257, 50 for 10 years. And the records show that there's been a lot of fatalities at that intersection. Thirteen total fatalities, fatality accidents, not individual fatalities, but accidents. And we've been safe for 10 years. I passed along, forwarded an email to the commissioners about, um, still concerns of the community. And they would love to have a turn lane on 257. But right now, in NDOT's eyes, this intersection is the safest it has ever been. And that goes back to not only my work, but NDOT's work and the community's work, getting the word out to just be careful. So with that, it's been 10 years. I've talked to the Bergman family. I am stepping down as the lead horse on this project of mine. And it's now up to the community. And turn it over to the community, see something, say something. Commissioners, see something, say something. Highway Department, see something, say something, do something. Because I can make a phone call to NDOT and they're Johnny on the spot a couple of days later. I see something, they respect what's going on at this intersection. They know it's a big deal, they know it's a concern for Davis County. So with that, commissioners, thank you for supporting the effort, um, supporting me and my cause and supporting the 1,300 citizens that petitioned you guys to continue to have your thumb on NDOT on this project. NDOT has been great to work with. I appreciate Rusty Fowler and his team. They are top-notch, they understand what Davis County concerns are at this intersection. And any, and they look at it yearly. Accidents, um, changes that they think need to be coming. They did tell me that next year, there are going to be some improvements. And I look forward to those improvements. I didn't get what I wanted, but we made a difference in Davis County. So thank you, guys, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Derek.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions?
No, well done.
That's a very good job, and I appreciate all you've done for it. It has helped 100%, yeah.
Thank you. Indeed, you should be proud. Thanks, Derek.
Thanks, sir.
Eric, next up, we got the Community Development Block Grant, uh, public hearing. Jennifer from SIDC, good morning, Jennifer.
Morning. I am going to go ahead and pass around the sign-in sheet. Sign in. For the public hearing. Today is December 12th, 2003, at 9:35 a.m. in the commissioner's room. Can everybody hear me okay? This meeting was advertised in compliance with Indiana Code IC 5-3-1. The meeting was advertised in the Washington Times Herald on November 30th, 2023. The purpose of this meeting is to receive comments and/or concerns regarding the county's owner-occupied rehabilitation project that took place in Davis County, including cities and towns. The project provided assistance to 10 housing units. The total grant amount from the Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority was $255,000. SIDC provided the county with the USDA Rural Development Housing Preservation Grant in the amount of $41,138.64 that served as the matching funds for the project. The type of work that was completed on the housing units included windows, roofing, heating and air conditioning, plumbing, electrical, things like that. We had two contractors working on the 10 houses from Green County. All the homes have been completed, the last house was completed yesterday. And part of those homes have been inspected by the IHCDA inspector and the remaining part will be inspected at a later date. Those that were inspected by the state, um, any deficiencies had been corrected and taken care of. The project went well, like I said, we did 10 houses. And does anybody have any comments, questions, or concerns regarding the project? If not, then I will close the public hearing at 9:37.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I next up, um, thank you. Next up, we've got a resolution, a local match, a commitment letter for the EMS facility. Um, I know, um, DCH is the one spearheading this project. I believe they've been working with Commissioner Arnold a little bit on this. I received a call yesterday from, uh, Michelle, Michelle Carrico. Morning, how are you? Regarding this, so they need a, they're applying for a grant. And Michelle, if you want to go ahead and, after you sign in there, I'm going to come up to the podium. But just a quick recap, uh, the ambulance, so they, the county is is responsible for ambulance coverage within their county.
Right.
Either they contract it out to a private sector or they do it themselves. It's an either-or, and it's not a choice. So we currently contracted out their DCH. They are currently wanting to relocate the the Washington paramedics out into their own space.
Out of the hospital, yeah.
Quality of life, better function, better, better everything.
More response, better response time, yeah.
Yeah, so it's better, more conducive, better recruiting. Uh, there's a $500,000 grant that's available. A $200,000 local match would like make it a five-star application, and those are Gap Heart's words, not SIDC's.
It will assist in making the application better for scoreable purposes as well as everything's going up and more expensive right now. So.
So we had to act fairly quickly. So we needed to know that the county is, um, willing to commit and then what source of funds those would be committed to. So we made some just general quick recommendations, and that's what she is here for.
Funding.
For the official actions. I'm sure I left out a lot of the important parts, but so, Michelle, I don't want to steal any of your thunder.
As Nathan has stated, I'm here today in regards to the EMS facility grant project. Do you have the resolution that needs signed today, along with a few other documents for the application? That is due on December the 22nd, so coming up here real soon, Friday. Basically, that's for the submission application and also committing the local match as far as the resolution is.
Yeah, so so where we're at is that $200,000, she asked which fund. I just told her edit, like, not just lack of knowledge of any other fund. That can be tweaked downstream, whether it's the edit, general fund. So, but where we're at now.
Foundation, community foundation.
Community foundation. So right now, we have to say, look, we're willing to give the $200,000 if we're not able to.
Yeah, we're basically guaranteeing the match, doesn't mean it'll come from us or all of it will come from us because these other parties should be contacted. A worthwhile endeavor, and again, you're building the assets of the community, so I feel we need to do it.
Where we at, edit right now? Did you put that up?
It was at 4:30.
After the courthouse, you're going to be a little bit north of 2 million, I think.
I don't worry.
We're still good on it, I think.
We'll vet it out.
10% right now.
Yeah, do you think I'm winging it here or what? So.
And I would say that's exactly what the edit was put in place for. For economic development, quality of life, so it's a good fit.
And once we get downstream, we can get into the details on, you know, if this happens, then who owns the building? And all that can be worked out downstream.
I don't think the officials need to own that building.
I don't either, that's why I want to keep it in the private sector hands. But if and when the private sector decides they want to get out of ambulance, we're the brand-new owners of a ambulance system.
Service, as well as some trucks.
The more we can support a third-party, um, the better off we are.
So is the, does the hospital have any stake in this?
They're the ones that's basically building it and, or now they're hoping they're getting it totally funded. But it's right now, the, right now, the hospital's committing about $1.5 million of cash themselves. They are infusing into our ambulance.
Right.
And with all the rules and regulations.
I understand that, I'm saying this this building, though.
So the, they, I mean, they, go ahead, Ron.
Well, with with all the regulations that they put on us, to run an ambulance service is not cheap. And we're very fortunate, the hospitals involved. We need to do things to keep them there. On this particular project, I don't think they're putting any dollars other than the land. They're supplying the land for the project.
And they're they're overseeing the project and, you know. So our 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 hope was that we could get it paid for for them just because operationally, they haven't come back to us for any increased funding. And and they are eating the costs. So you could say they're putting in one and a half million. That's how much cash. Someone came to us, yeah. So they've got a lot of skin in the game. I'm convinced of that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay?
Yep.
Um, okay, any other questions, Ron? If not, I'd entertain a motion to sign the letter and to sign the resolution supporting the $200,000 support from Davis County. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Arnold, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Taylor, I'm all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
My motion passes 3-0.
I have just a couple other documents to kind of clear up. Um, I know Nathan wasn't at the oct.
Yeah.
Certification. We're just saying that you guys don't receive annual brochures.
Yep. Got bypassed, didn't I?
You might go ahead and add that to your your motion to go ahead and sign that.
Sign that again, yeah.
Okay, I missed half of what she said, but can we amend the motion to what Michelle said?
As long as we're not making any more than $25 million off grants.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. So I'd entertain a motion to assign the the certification.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
My motion passes 3-0.
Thanks. Get it.
Okay, wonderful.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
Um, real quick, um, I did talk to Michelle last night regarding that courthouse and the story. Grants available, if we do that. So and then I talked to Lara after I talked to Michelle. So Lara is going to reach out to, um, the two people at the Historical Society, DNR.
Right.
Jeff Owens is going to send them that one window that we were talking about. Send it to them just so they can put their eyes on it. If they say no, then we'll go with the other one. If they say yes, then.
$200,000 savings.
$200,000 savings, so. Anyway, thanks for that information, Michelle, thank you. All right, next up, we got an eclipse update. Just kind of wanted to keep the Visitors Bureau on our agenda as we get closer to the eclipse date. I've got Scott and and Joe Morris here, um, just from an EMA standpoint, from a Visitors Bureau standpoint. Just kind of high-level update with with where we're at and regarding the event.
Well, I don't know how high-level it'll be, but I will give you an update. I will tell you that, um, last month, Discover Downtown did, um, submit their formal request for funding for their activities and events. The commission, um, hasn't declined nor approved those dollar requests yet. There are many updates. Uh, update from the Chamber of Commerce. We, uh, last week hired a new marketing and multimedia coordinator that is working right now on our website development and our eclipse page. If you get a chance, stop in, um, if he's in, Edgar Duran, real excited to have him on our team. Uh, he's going to be doing all of our marketing, multimedia coordination, um, all things, uh, Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau. But namely, on this particular event, is being able to funnel all the information and the, um, events that are happening throughout the county. Uh, this week, the airport just, uh, released their graphic. I brought one for you, if you'd like to see it, of the events they're planning for that particular weekend. Uh, there are several others. Emails are going back and forth, uh, daily on various individuals or groups that are looking at for information or looking for, um, ideas on what they can do. Um, and I will tell you, it's kind of a 50-50. Some are all in, they can, they're excited about it, others are cautious, don't know how to handle it. But, um, we're doing the best we can to kind of navigate and and it could be anything. Is, um, Joe, what do you think we should charge for a parking spot? To, um, those looking at, uh, what kind of events they can tie into and getting that information to us. So be watching, if you go to visitdaviescounty.com, we have an Eclipse 2024 tab. But on the main page, we've added the Davis County Eclipse logo. And Edgar and my team, they're building out their website. So when you go there, um, I will announce it now. I did secure domain names for every town in our city. Uh, that would be, as an example, Oden, Indiana, 2024eclipse.com. Offordsville, Indiana, 2024eclipse. The reason I purchased those is that we can make those as hidden domains that will be automatically linked. And we'll give those folks, if they have anything going on in that particular community, they can, um, give us the information, they can promote that domain link. And then what it will do is go to our landing page, they'll break it down for them. So this is a big task. It's, uh, it's like building out infrastructure, and I've heard a lot about infrastructure today, everything from solar to roads to. But a website, when you develop that and capturing this information, there's a lot to it. The good thing is, our infrastructure is already in place, thanks to our friends at EDC when we created the WeAreDavisCounty.com. Uh, so we're just now trying to funnel that in. And it was essential for our office to, um, hire the right person that could do that on a daily basis, especially for this particular event and all the other, um, you know, 280-some events that happen throughout the year, so.
Very good, uh, the only, thank you for that. The the only thing I've kind of heard is that there's a meeting coming up on 12/15 from the Visitors Bureau is having a meeting on December 15th, I guess. And just the communication of, and the people not knowing that these meetings are occurring.
Yeah, this is a, it's.
My question is, is that you that coordinates those meetings or is it the president of VB or who sends those meeting requests out?
So that that started out as a board-to-board discussion.
Okay.
That, and it evolved, though, to your point, it evolved into a, let's expand it.
Okay.
So the initial meeting that you're talking. So, the initial meeting that you're talking about is a Zoom call, and it started out executive board to executive board, then it opened up to board to board. And then from those discussions, let's make this a Zoom meeting for all those other stakeholders.
Who's responsible for sending, and again, like, as you know.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm responsible for sending out, I'm not gonna be here Friday, so I'm navigating who's gonna, uh, manage the Zoom call, yeah.
So you'll, you'll get word out that there's.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah, we're adding to the list, yeah, would you like to be on it?
I wouldn't like to be on it, but I would like for all the people who want to be there to be on it, so, but they need to be notified of it.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Awesome, great work, great.
Any other questions?
April the 8th, is that the date, April the 8th?
April the 8th.
Yeah.
Face and hand in celebration.
Birthday bash, Davies County.
Oh, I get it now, I get it, I understand, you didn't tell me that.
Can you re, yeah, but don't rename your websites.
No, 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 and I'll, I'll see if I can get Bonnie Taylor here and, uh, for you.
All right, buddy, thanks, Joe, thanks for the update. All right, next up, we got 2024 contractual services from Purdue Extension, I don't see.
Cindy, yeah.
Right in front of me, I'm sorry, hi Cindy. The windows just got sent to DNR just now, so. Good morning Cindy.
Morning.
Morning.
So we got before us the contract for 2024, um, services, the Purdue Extension is, is obviously a program we've always had, we, they do great things in the community, and it's, you know, from, you know, I know Ron's really kind of allowed us to learn more about, it is usually something we kind of rubber stamp in this, keep doing what you're doing, so we've learned a lot more about what you actually do over the, you know, past, you know, several years, so. But there is a contract between the extension, uh, and the county on an annual basis, so that's what we have before, I'll, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure, I will, um, be happy to entertain any questions you have, is there, there's the contract and there's, and then there's the MOU, which is appendix one, so those have been signed by campus and, um, I'm here to answer any questions you may have, it's.
It's the contract.
The verbiage is the same.
Sure, so the contract amount is 233,835 dollars. So what determines that amount, I guess is.
That's a formula from Purdue, so I'd be happy to get someone from Purdue to explain that in more detail, but this comes to us from the business office.
Gotcha.
Um, and right now, through the work that we have with, um, Luis and Pouchon working with the Health Department, um, as far as covering the cost, I think, um, the Health Department is interested in entertaining some of support in the future, because Purdue's actually picking up, um, 40% of the piece that belongs to that position that was created that Luis has had, the, it was community outreach.
Okay.
For Latino, the Latino population, but that didn't really fall, um, automatically into one of our program areas, so he's now a split position, 75% health and human sciences, which fits with all the work with the Health Department. Um, and 25% 4H, because he's doing juntos, which he just completed, um, the first round of that, and he's actually up in Indianapolis, or up in Lafayette with a state juntos group. Um, so that will continue to grow, that was partially funded by his position, but then, um, the programmatic cost was covered by United Way.
Very great, and, and then compared to 2023, what's the, the amount, any?
Sure, so.
有没有 increase just because of inflation and everything?
Sure, and then actually, so I, um, I was formerly 80%, and when I became, uh, CED, that increased to 100%. Um, so that's a little bit of that, I am currently receiving, and I'm on year, soon to be in year four of the HERSA grant that we have with IU. So they've been, um, committing 10% of my position, so 10% goes to Purdue then is, you know, a part of what covers my funding. So that was, um, instead of increasing this year by 20%, when we added me as this, the county extension director, I asked them to put that 10% into that ask, so the county would not have to pay that 10%.
Okay, great.
It should have been 20, and we, we reduced it to 10, so it should look like about a 10% in my portion.
And do you know roughly why we paid this year?
I didn't bring it with me, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay.
It was over 200. Whoa.
That's fine.
Eight or 10 comes to mind, maybe.
Gentlemen, you have any questions?
I'll say it again, I think it's a good program, we get a lot of good, and they fund a lot of positions themselves through other funding. That being said, I've asked for a number of years to have kind of an MOU between the chamber, the EDC, and extension to just kinda coordinate things better. I've yet to see anything, so I'm more than willing, and I think you're doing a good job, but I'd just like to see, make sure we getting the most bang for the buck, and it goes up every year. And I get, from constituents, I get a lot of questions on this contract, so what I would say is, I have no problem with this one, but before next year is approved by this commissioner, I want a formal MOU in place between EDC, the chamber, and extension, and lays out what's being done on the community development side.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, um, well, I mean, I, I, you know, obviously, this, this adds up, and then, you know, when, after you've been the commissioner for a while, you start wondering, okay, where's this money coming from? And then, you know, it's coming from somebody, then we're allocating it to this. Uh, division, and then we've gotta have some ability to reconcile that, you know, we took this, and we gave this, and we got. And, um, like your updates you give us throughout the year are really, really impactful, and I have no question that we're getting our money's worth, uh, but finding that funding formula and who's funding what, and, um, would be helpful to me, I'm more of a numbers guy. I don't know if this is your total 100% budget, and these aren't questions we have to answer today, but over the next year, I would like to see, just from a budgetary standpoint, the flow of the dollars, and then what you're currently providing us during the, you know, mid-year updates, incredible. I mean, I guess I'm interested in hearing, in kinda seeing what Ron's referring to in my head, I can't really picture these MOUs, so I mean, I guess all I could say today, Ron, to your comments, is if you wanna kind of draft, just on paper.
Well, it's just those three getting together on the community development side, what each one is doing, to give a little context, when they first started the position of community development, they called it economic development. And there was a grant to pay for it, it was like, oh, we're gonna have this position, we've got a grant, it's not gonna cost you anything. That gentleman in that position caused me more heartburn with the DCEDC from what he was out doing, as far as messing things up, because there was no coordination between the two groups. And then they switched it to, instead of economic development, it's now community development, and by the way, the funding went away, so it kinda falls on us. And again, don't get me wrong, I think Purdue Extension does a great job, but I think we can do better, with me, it's about making Davis County the best they can be. So I'd want those three groups to get together in kind of a hierarchy on certain projects, and I would really like to see the community development person fall under probably the EDC as far as coordination.
So when you say community development person, who is that currently?
Who do you have working community development?
But that's on, that's Purdue.
I'm the community development educator, that's my appointment.
That's Purdue Extension, okay. Well, I mean, I, I guess, I, I, my, my thought is, if you and those three, you know, leaders wanna get together and, and you share in more detail your vision, and, um, I, I would wanna know if they're supportive, or if they're not supportive, and why. So I mean, I would entertain you and those three getting together and just getting them up to speed on what you're wanting to do, and then if they're supportive of it, and, but if they're not supportive of it, then I wanna know why they're not supportive. I mean, would you mind?
No, I've spoken to previous director, but our previous director's not there with the DCEDC.
So you're talking, uh, Bob Gruy?
Bob Gruy and Joe.
Cindy and Joe, those three, okay, I don't think it would hurt anything for you and those three to get together, and then just, then, I would do them kind of as my advisory committee on, okay, convince me why we should do this, or why we shouldn't do this. It doesn't sound like a bad thing, but, you know, but.
Devil's always in the detail.
Yeah, in the detail, so please proceed forward. Okay, thank you Cindy.
You're welcome.
And I'm a Purdue grad, so I, I really like the, I'm a little biased, but, um, I try, but I try to keep that out of my decisions, but thank you. All right, next up, we've got the baby and me tobacco.
I think you're gonna approve that, aren't you?
Oh, yes, let's approve this contract first, then we'll talk about babies. Um, so for us, we got the, thank you, Grant, and we got the contract in the amount of 233,835 dollars for Purdue Extension for 2024, if there's no other questions, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
My motion passes 3-0.
Hi, good morning.
Hello.
Good to see you.
Hi, so I'm here today for the baby and me tobacco free program, we just need to renew our contract for 2024, um, and I have it here in front of me. Um, this past year, we've had, I currently still have three, um, families going through the baby and me tobacco free program. One family is just getting ready to graduate, their baby will be a year old in January, the second one should be due any time now, and they've been successful. And then the, um, I have one that's due in April that I'm working with to try to get her to stop smoking. Well, I have a lot of moms come, and they do the first session, and then they never come back, and I feel for them, I try to reach out to them, but it's not always successful, it's not for everybody, so. I would like to keep this program going in 2024 and see what we can do. You guys have any questions?
No questions for me, gentlemen?
Yeah, it's been a, I think it's been a good program over the years, yeah.
It is, it's a great program.
And it's no cost to the county.
No, we, we, the cost is through the Health Department.
All right, well, if there's no other questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve the baby and me, um, tobacco program.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
My motion passes 3-0.
Thank you.
Thanks, Adrian. Um, next up, we've got, um, Crystal, good morning, Crystal.
Good morning, guys.
With the, um, the Kim Murray renewal contract.
Uh huh, this is, uh, his annual contract for new construction, um, he's been doing this for 16 years.
Long time, yep.
I'm just here to answer any questions you might have.
None for me, Kim does great work.
Yeah, he's done excellent work.
He does excellent work, and, um, I wanna see him stay.
Yeah.
I don't have any problems with him at all.
Ron, you good?
Just what exactly does he do, he goes out after?
New constructions, this is first new construction, uh, so permits come in, we gather those permits up, give them to him, and then he goes out and measures, brings in the measurements to us.
Which should be a, a new home or an addition?
New home, an addition, um, anything that you would have to get a permit for.
Okay, so.
Instruct.
We've got a 40% exclusion, I think, how much trouble does that cause you?
It causes a lot of trouble.
Okay.
Um, I would like to see personally, um, that the permitting system be tweaked in that it would be free to file for a permit, and it would be required for everything to file for a permit. But then if they didn't file, that there would be some kind of penalty. Now, we charge them, or, oh, I shouldn't say we, I don't, um, my understanding is, they are charged to file for a permit, so they just say, I just won't file for a permit, there's no teeth behind it, there's no penalty behind it, so they just don't.
They, they filed at the plan.
I'm sorry.
The plan commission's office, is that what you're saying?
Yes. Um.
Okay, I just wanted the 40%, there's more information to come on that, and I'll talk about that.
There is the, the 40%, I believe that, um, if there's not a change above 40% of their footprint, then they don't require them to file, I believe that's how it is now.
It is, yeah.
I have no problem with the contract.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with any contract, I do have problem with increasing permitting for people to build, but that's a different conversation for a different day, so I won't die on that sword today. So, um, but yeah, Kim Murray's, that, no problem at all with his contracts, so if there's no other questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
My motion passes 3-0.
Thank you.
Thanks, Crystal. Okay. Morning Dale, I think it's still morning, right?
Still, still there, I haven't passed noon yet.
In preparation for our relocation of the, uh, courthouse employees to the basement, you have a couple proposals in front of you, one is for, um, Buchanan Mechanical, 13,700 to, um, it's for fight duck work and some insulation downstairs to, to spread the air out and try to get the basement quiet down before we have occupants. The second is a, uh, proposal for an audio-only temporary solution for courtroom, our temporary courtrooms will need to be able to record, uh, the, the court proceedings, um, in a amount of 23,000. Can look at the new number, 23,219,44. And basically, I need approval for this to move forward and have to take these back, get on the phone, and get them run, the, uh, it's the only, the only hiccup in the whole thing is gonna be getting the audiovisual equipment in time, but we're gonna try.
Well, I've got a meeting with one of the judges right after this meeting, and, um, so, great thing is, these are kinda the last of the couple of items that we need to get approved. Uh, the wall is being built, it's almost done already downstairs, and so the HVAC has to be reconstructed for that, but we can use, leave that all in place for the future when we go back and reset stuff, so. And then the JAV system, I mean, Greg Smith has really spent a ton of time, went down to, you know, Kentucky, I mean, you guys have seen some of the emails, this is really a state-of-the-art system.
And all, all but one piece of this will be relocated into the courthouse as part of the, part of the final, final, final system.
And this is the, it is the system that they wanted, so it's that, that amount times three.
This, this system was passed to me by Judge Greg Smith, yes.
And I think it's, they're the only provider of this particular system.
They manufacture their own IP-based equipment, yes.
Is the wall above and beyond this 13,000?
The wall is, uh, yes, the wall is, we had 5,000 budgeted for the wall, but we got it put in for way under that.
Yep, yep.
And it's six inches, and it's built like a hotel, so there's no soundproof going through the boards.
You can tell a big difference in the sound.
Because the soundproofing was critical, so they really.
It's worth walking in before you leave.
I'll, I'll walk down there.
It's some Offordsville engineering down there, it was really good, but actually, it was top, top notch, so, appreciate you spearheading that so quickly, we, we were just down there Thursday.
Scott took care of the wall.
We're down there Thursday.
Scott jumped right on the wall, and when I got here yesterday, they were already downstairs laying boards, and I didn't have stuff moved yet.
That's incredible, we were worried about it being done in January, so.
Yeah, we are still set for a child support move.
Yeah.
Next week, and January 1st, getting everybody else.
Over here.
So yes, these are budgeted, uh, we have a significant amount budgeted for the courthouse, currently we have 120 budgeted for the courthouse system.
Yeah.
This will be 63, 69 of it, that, and obviously we'll get the rest as we.
Back across street, yep.
And that, that number should be here later this week.
Okay, uh, any other questions, gentlemen?
Nope.
If not, I didn't, I'm sorry.
Sounds good.
I'd enter, Ron, you good?
Yes.
I'd entertain a motion to approve the Buchanan and the JAVs invoices.
So moved.
Motion made by, or, or proposals, I'm sorry, a, a motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye. My motion passes 3-0. They're right here, buddy.
We're gonna go start working on it.
Grab, yeah, grab and go, thank you for all your work.
No problem. Appreciate it, Dale.
And, uh.
Just this way, I'm looking to be a part of rewinding courthouse, not everybody used to do that.
Well.
My wish is they could do that, but not everybody gets to do it.
It's a great attitude.
Not everybody gets to do it.
And not to share too much personal information, but I just wanna congratulate Dale, I'm being tobacco-free now for how long?
A lot of gum.
A lot of gum.
Two months.
After 34 years.
If this doesn't get him smoking or, or, so far, so good, brother, you're doing great, hang in there. Yeah, there's no.
You gotta keep moving. What are you gonna do with all that money you're gonna save?
Uh, upgrade a truck like Nathan's.
Like mine.
You have to know it, don't you?
Just, here someone didn't hear you, go ahead. I'm teasing. Yeah, my brother really likes it, he's probably put more miles on it than I have. Sorry, Dale, thanks again for all your work. All right, um, next up, we got the legal, agreement for legal services, I know Jen sent some recommendations over from, um, uh, Irwin that they suggested we put in here, I can't remember, I know it was like the hourly rate or something, I can't, I can't remember.
Paragraph two, the sentence that talks about, I think you asked for this, uh, a couple years ago.
Yeah, I asked to put that in and they suggested we pull that, we pull that out. I don't understand why, but I, they're an HR firm. I live in Offordsville. I don't know, so. So granted, you, you and Jen have corresponded a little bit. Should we pull that?
I have no issues if it's in. I have no issues if it's out. I didn't see the.
They wanted it out for clarification purposes.
Okay, you got the, you know.
Yeah, the letter that Jen got. She'd sent out to all of us.
Did we strike it, or what do you think?
I would strike it, but again, I, we said it here in April and talked about him submitting a monthly invoice for the hours he put in, and we agreed he would do that. We haven't seen an invoice yet, and I would recommend we put that in there. And it's just checks and balances. It doesn't cut us fees in it. It just lets us know how much time's being spent. And I would recommend we add that to this contract.
Yeah, the invoices had started coming in in October, you know, some few reasons, probably for more, maybe for an executive session on why some of the previous ones haven't been submitted. But we did believe get the October one in December. We'll be getting the November one here in, I'm sorry, we got the October.
That's for services he provides under his base contract.
For October services and then.
I haven't seen those yet.
Yeah, the previous nine months have just been kind of just.
Okay, as long as going forward, he does that, but let's put it as part of the contract.
And what, we, we have in here that all services have to be billed by the fifteenth of the next month in order to be payable?
That's all services? Okay, I missed that part.
Well, I mean, all the services are listed in the contract.
Well, but are you talking about the extra services he can build separate for, or the base services that he gets?
They're both in the contract. So he gets fifty thousand for the base services?
And he'll submit an invoice for the time spent on those.
Not for the fifty.
That's what I'm requesting.
Oh, okay. I, I don't feel he should submit for the fifty. If we, if and when the Board of Commissioners feels we're not getting our fifty thousand dollars worth, then change the contract.
How do we know?
Well, I personally know as president of the Board of Commissioners, because I work with him about every, every day. So, so I know, just because behind the scenes, ten to twenty things are happening every week. As Michael knows, as servant as president of the Commissioners, so I personally know how you guys know. You wouldn't know as much as the Board of Commissioners.
As a commissioner, I need to know.
So I've just stated my opinion. I'm not supportive of it. If Michael is, we'll add it, so.
I think we leave the contract the way it is right now.
Okay. All right, so we'll strike that flat fee as based off the party's expectation sentence per Irwin?
Irwin, yeah.
Okay. So with that revision, I'd entertain a motion to approve?
A moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second? I will second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye, nay, I guess.
Okay. So a motion passes two to one. Can that mean we just write, Commissioner Arnold opposed, or should I say that one's blank? Their preference?
Could be a spot on there for a's and a's.
There's not, so.
Just, just have him re.
Okay.
He needs to redo the contract.
There, there's a spot.
Well, he needs to redo it, to take that one provision out.
It's in here.
Yeah, sure. So it, there, there's a line in here.
That's what happened last time. In April, we agreed that he would put that in there, but this old contract was signed. And so the contract that we actually proved in April wasn't the one that was signed.
Well, once, once I learn more through the logistical process of it, you know, my, my opinion changed with, with the information, the knowledge I got over the past six months. So again, I'm not mad one way or the other. I'm just not supportive of it. All right. The next step, we've got the Odin, a public library appointment. I believe we have Scott Borders, who is willing to join, to take that seat. And we need this to be approved for Susie Graeber today. So any questions or comments? If not, I'd entertain.
Scott did a good job.
Good, you know him good. I'd entertain a motion to approve Scott Borders to the library?
A moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes three zero. Okay, next up, we got the buggy permits. What I've asked, what, what we have asked to do is put the buggy permits as a standing item, the first meeting in December every year, just so we don't overlook it. Forget about it, yeah. So just a real quick update. I know just, this is a sensitive topic in the public, it seems, as far as the buggy damage and so forth. So we have been meeting with the Amish Safety Committee in my entire nine years. I'm sure it even went before that. So the sheriff and, and Chris and I, President of the Board, whoever, goes and meets with them. And it's a quite enjoyable evening, I, I feel. I always look forward to it. But basically, we, we have them help us decide how much these things should be, so that they can be the keepers of the culture, so to speak. So just a real quick recap. In two thousand fifteen, buggy fees were sixty dollars. We sold eighteen hundred and seventy of them, and we collected a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Today, buggy fees are one hundred and twenty-five dollars. We sold three thousand one hundred and twenty-two of them, and we collected three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. And I've told them this verbally, that I think, I think two hundred to two hundred and fifty dollars per buggy permit is where we need to get to, because seven hundred to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is, on the low side, some of the horse-related damage. But I said, I'm, I'm willing to do it gradually. So we did take them up to one twenty-five last year. And then we did switch over from the plates to the stickers, which praise God, they actually stick. That was my number one concern. But they're working really well, I think, because they're so visible. And so I, I feel we need to leave the fee at one hundred and twenty-five dollars.
For another year.
For another year, and then next year, bring a proposal, what we need to increase it to. Because we do need to get to that number sooner than later. We pay much, gas tax and excise and will tax, we pay much more than that, than that yearly. So we're not being unfair. So, so anyway, so that's where we have good progress on the buggy permit revenue. But I did tell the Amish Safety Board that, you know, the majority of the Commissioners is who will decide what the permits be, so whatever you guys feel.
I'm fair. I mean, I'd, I'd be fair with them too, and leave it same for this year, but definitely next year. There is a lot of damage. You don't see it as bad on an older road, but whenever you put new asphalt down, it, it's very, very visible. Kind of hard to see it when you're spraying an asphalt road when you see it, so. But no, I would, I would be more.
Guys clarify, just for the, for the record, what, what it currently is and where, where you're wanting it to go.
I'm sorry, it's currently at one hundred and twenty-five dollars per buggy permit, and then we do still have the school tag permits that are seventy-five, I believe.
For the ponies, yeah.
For the pony carts. That was a compromise we made with them, that we'll, we'll go and try that, see how those pony cart. Because in theory, it's a pony and the kids are just going to school, and can we help lower that cost? So I said, sure, we'll try that. Logistically, I'm not sure how it's working out so far. I told him, if we see problems, then I'm gonna recommend we just eliminate the pony carts and everything.
The pony carts and the other ones are different color or something?
Yeah, we made one that's a circle and one a rectangle, same color.
So you can see it, it's very visible.
And we did put school pony cart only, I think, on there. So we have two fees in place now, so I just kind of lumped them all together, so.
You're recommending nothing this year, then come back next year. What kind of increase are you thinking about next year?
Oh, boy, you know.
Did they give you a suggestion?
No.
No?
No, they didn't give me a suggestion. I, I, I've challenged Chris to get more definitive numbers. Hey, when you do horse dropping, I, I, that, that's, that's clear. I want, I want that number. Shoulders, some of this stuff is hard to quantify what exactly is coming from horses, traffic. So just do the best you can. So I, I'm thinking, long story short, I'm, I'm thinking in the one fifty-ish range is what I'm thinking.
My, my only thing is that I don't want to create sticker shock, so if you think about going to one seventy-five, two hundred, I'd put a little bit on this year and a little next year, but from one twenty-five to one fifty, it should not be.
Well, that was some of the conversations we've had. I said, look, I'll go slower, but we may have to have larger jumps.
Right. Sounds like we are getting more permits, though. I mean, you went from how many to three thousand?
Eighteen hundred to thirty-one hundred.
So I mean, that's, that, at least they're getting out and getting the permits now.
And I think in theory, there's fifteen hundred Amish houses-ish is the number I heard at one point in time.
So there's at least two buggies per household then.
Commissioner Gavhardt thinks there's five hundred-ish unlicensed buggies out there, is that I had. There's not two thousand unlicensed buggies out there. But, so the compliance is getting better.
Yeah.
So yeah, I'm thinking in the one fifty range, what we would do. But then, I'd like to just give them like a four-year proposal and say, hey.
Every year.
So we don't have to keep doing this.
Four or five year or something, whatever it takes, just to get there, get the number there, because that number's never going to get any less.
We'll do it whenever I'm no longer a Commissioner. That's when the big jump. I'll make that big jump right then. Or whether we're no longer, so anyway, all right.
After next year, you can just put it wherever you want.
Yeah. So, okay.
Going back to that, what you're saying, though, it's never gonna end, though, because cost of rebuilding a road to was gonna go up, right?
Ultimately, I want to get to a formula where we're tracking all the expenses, and we just simply, this meeting, we take the expenses, we divide it by the current buggy permit of number of thirty-one hundred, and then that outputs next year's fee. If, if they don't want to buy buggy permits and it's twenty-five hundred, then everyone has a higher permit fee. And they can self-govern, and when they see someone not being compliant, they know it's costing them more because of fifth grade math.
Right.
But ultimately, ultimately, that's what I would like to get.
It's gonna have to get there one of the days.
It's got to, so. Okay, you guys okay keeping? So I'd entertain a motion to keep all the buggy permit fees the same as two thousand and twenty-three, four twenty-four?
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes three zero. Mr. Dale, did you need something else? Come on up, buddy.
Dale needs to order something for the equipment today.
The, the order for the AV equipment requires a, it's, I didn't bring the paper. It's roughly six thousand dollar deposit for, for each one. Well, if I get that claim today and turn it in, it's two weeks before you guys approve it again, which is two weeks before it gets ordered. So I need to figure out how I can get, I can, I can try to get, probably, I can get with him, either get the invoice this afternoon or first thing in the morning, get it on a claim, get it to them. But I need it, I need it paid with this Friday's claim docket, if possible.
Have to get an invoice.
So this is.
Have the President of the Commissioners approve it, have her sign it, I mean.
It's not gonna happen all the time, but we've got a timeline to keep on this, and we, we're trying to move people over, so this is kind of.
That's already our, that's already our holdup piece anyway, and I got back there and started scanning it, then to send to him and seeing the deposit, and I was like, if I do that tomorrow, that don't get approved for two weeks, so hopefully, there's a way.
If we can approve it today, then just have, once it's, get the invoice, Nathan could sign the invoice, pay it, right? I mean, is that fair?
I missed the first part.
He needs approval for a six thousand dollar claim to expedite this particular project, because we've got to get people from over there downstairs. And so he's asking for permission for a six thousand, up to six thousand dollars. Is that correct?
I'm gonna make sure.
And what's the service or vendor? Can you share that?
Justice Audio Video, the JAVs.
Oh, the JAVs, okay, yeah.
Yeah, this is for the JAVs, so we're already kind of, kind of pushing it for them, and if I, it's actually the, let's see, deposit is five thousand eight hundred and four eighty-six per.
Times three?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'd entertain a motion to allow Dale to approve that invoice.
Once the invoice is in, you sign it.
And single signature by Commission, by the President of the Board.
Board, yeah. So moved.
I'll funnel, I'll funnel all that through the girls for you.
Motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes three zero.
Thank you.
Okay, farm lease, advertising, or.
Real quick.
I'm sorry, yes.
Where, where do you want that money, that six thousand dollars to come?
It, it comes from the hundred and twenty thousand dollar line item that we.
It always does, I think.
That we have for the courthouse AV system, yeah.
Advertising. So we've got the revised descriptions for the, for the various farms. We're gonna go ahead and, with your approval, we'll go ahead and put those out for, for bid. We'll open and have that approved at some point in January, February.
That's a back news. It's, I think it's at the county council. Just cross it out.
You're so smart.
So Sean worked, Sean Gavhardt worked on the descriptions for the farms. We talked a little bit about it at the last meeting, but didn't know if there's any other comments relative to farm leases one, two, or three? Farm leases one, two, and three, that's changed from last year. We got the revised descriptions and, I mean, is there anything in particular? I know we set them all to end at the end of this year.
Right.
So we're gonna put those back out.
I think what we need to talk about is the airport for the Aviation Board, because they, they own the majority of the property now. I don't think the Commissioners need to be writing a contract or anything with that farm ground. They need to have a lot more control over that ground. This year, that, there was an incident where there was farm equipment on an active runway without permission. So I think they need a lot more control over their, their surroundings and the property that they own. So I think we need to turn acres over to the Aviation Board that they own. I know, but they've, they've got, so they've actually got a farmer, that's presently a farmer, a piece of their, portion of their ground.
Yeah, yeah.
So it'll be the same process, whether it's the airport or?
It just has to go out for bid or send it out.
And you're thinking that just have them control, at least around the airport, control that process, put it out and have them.
So we donated, I don't know what the acres was, we donated more acres to them. They already currently own more acres than, I'm saying they had acres that the County Commissioners were leasing out, which, you know, that was on, on their Aviation Board. So I think they need to take every piece of, every parcel that they own around that airport, that's farmable. They need to have a contract of their own. They have their own person farmer. That's just my suggestion.
Yeah.
But is that all the property or we still own property?
We still own some, a piece of, portion of the property to the west.
I would, I would let them manage that for us as well.
Doesn't have to be a farm rental business.
Because actually, it is.
For farming, an agreement with them to manage the property that we still own.
Yeah, and we'll have, there'll be two subleases, you know, this money, on this side, we go to the Commissioners, just so, from the state border accounts.
I think there's roughly forty acres left that the Commissioners own.
Great, I like that.
Hey, Erica, would you be willing to hop up at the podium real quick?
I'll come up to the podium, sorry about that.
Could you come on the podium real quick? Thank you, sorry. Erica is the manager at the airport?
Yep, Davies County Airport. So, um, yeah, we're willing to take it over. I have background in farming, so I'm knowledgeable about that.
Great.
I would, tell me how to legally do this. I've never done it with county.
We'll donate our county attorney.
Okay.
And then he can help you oversee.
Okay.
When we put out, and so it's, it's six of one, half dozen the other.
Okay.
When we put out the bids, we can put it out in the name of the airport, and then we'll have to do some arrangement between the Board of Commissioners and the airport.
Would we have a say on who gets it?
Yeah, I mean, Commissioner Gavhardt would say, well, you would have a say on.
In other words, the farmer, we would, the farmer that did do the damage, we don't want him back, point blank.
Davies County own.
We would love to say Davies County only farmers.
I would love, I would recommend.
Davies County resident farmers.
Yeah. I, I always wondered why we allowed out of state, out of county people to kind of farm.
And unfortunately, it was the Anna County crew that did do the damage, so.
What do you think?
I just want to focus the conversation. I don't want to, I understand.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Thank you, you know what you can and can't do.
Perfect.
Hey, you work out the, yeah, work out the details.
Perfect, sure.
But I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, and the board, they'd readily agree to take it over, so I have that word from them.
We'll, we'll put this out with your permission this month, and we'll get it back.
Yeah.
But I don't think all. But I don't think all, the farm lease one, two, and three, those are different locations.
Different locations, yeah.
Specifically, what we're talking about is the one that relates, that's.
To the airport.
Contiguous to the airport.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I know, that's the only piece we.
Yeah, the other two are out, the hotwood garage.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'd take a, an, entertain a motion to, I just go ahead and just table maybe all three of these, until they can work out the details.
We'll table it, but we'll go ahead and advertise it appropriately, so that they, they're, they've got more control over what's contiguous to the airport.
Whichever, what, but what farm lease is that one? Is it, remember which one it is for the airport?
I think two.
Number three. What, whichever one it is for the airport, just keep it the exact way it is intact, full acres, and then still advertise it, but it will be the Board of Aviation controlling it, yeah.
I do have a question. There are three different farmers that farm the land around the airport? Are you guys thinking just all one farmer farming, or are you breaking it? Okay.
It'd be up to you, okay.
You'll get bids, typically you go with the best bid, but there's other factors that can enter into it.
Okay.
Like causing damage to your runway.
Yeah, so you guys can talk about that offline and then.
Perfect.
Try your recommendation back to the Commissioners.
Appreciate it very much.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Proceed.
Okay, so we don't need to do anything else there. Next up, we got the annual nepotism, uh, and the contract disclosure forms that the Commissioners need to sign on an annual basis, so.
We just signed them.
Everyone's got those done. Uh, the annual appointments, I know I'm still working on a few of mine. Um, the opening goes up on the twenty-sixth. Um, I'll get mine done. Commissioner Arnold and Gafford are doing all the heavy lifting on this one.
Everybody on the second page is willing to serve.
Okay. I hear there's only one Commissioner.
I'll miss that schedule again next year.
I know, it's another worse one. All right, perfect. We'll, we'll get that done next time. Um, courthouse renovation update, okay. We all had a meeting last Thursday. Uh, we saw kind of the high level numbers we're looking at. Council meeting's gonna be tomorrow. There'll be, that will be the official, um, uh, body to make this go forward, but I would like to go ahead and have the Commissioners, you know, make a, um, motion to do whatever they feel based off last Thursday's meeting. I think from a high level, these are rough numbers, thirteen point seven million all in, including the contingent CP, uh, for the courthouse renovation project.
And that's relocation and everything too.
Relocation, everything, so.
Yeah.
Any more questions? If not.
I think, you know, it's, it's, it's higher than the number that they've set for a budget, but you guys done a extremely good job over and over and over that, trying to get that price down. That's, that's where we landed at. Other than maybe the windows, we're not gonna get any cheaper. So I'm comfortable moving forward at, at that price, more than we budgeted, but, you know, sometimes stuff happens and it's, you know, can get past it, so.
You had made a suggestion that any money left over from our budget this year could go towards that project. I like that. And I would say, is there any way we can get that number at our next meeting, on what it might be?
Question.
We got, we still got money in the salt.
We could, I know. My only question is who's gonna do it? How much time is it gonna cost them to do it? Or should we just let them know, hey, whatever money's there, it's gonna get re-encumbered or whatever into the general fund?
It always does, so.
So it's gonna be, it's gonna get dumped into those accounts anyway. I, I like where you're going, but with the timeframe, I don't know who would be able to find those numbers and take the time and then where does that?
It should be on our last report of the year, but that won't be till January.
Right.
Bottom line is they're gonna bond so much, I've always encouraged them to bond the least amount as possible, but it's too late in the process. So money's money. Okay, I have no problem.
After three years though, we gotta, we can, or a payoff though, too, after three years.
Okay.
But there's no.
Do we know that's gonna be in there?
Yeah, Tony said it was in there, no restrictions after three years.
All right, with all that being said, I said I'd entertain a motion for the Commissioners to, um, approve the overall courthouse renovation project and move forward.
Submoved.
Case. Motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
I think I will be at the meeting tomorrow. If you guys will be here, I don't know.
You will be, I'm not going to.
Okay, I'll, I will show up just to listen if they have any questions.
Fantastic.
And just a quick update on that. The bonds, um, are slated for a finalization in mid-January. Council's gonna take a couple more steps, uh, this week or last week, they sent the, the money back out to banks to bid on the, the up to six million dollars. And I, I do know that they're gonna minimize the amount that they borrow, because that's, that's not obviously desirable. If we've got cash on hand, we use cash on hand. If we don't, they always said five million, but the, the documents say up to six million, so. What it is. I don't know if there's any questions specifically about the timing, if you guys are comfortable with middle January. Middle of January is the earliest that we could have the money, so.
And Ron, just really roughly, I just went through our current budget, factoring in another month, I mean, we're probably looking at seven fifty-ish. Give or take a hundred grand is what, what should be left over. Most of that's in that two twenty-five and industrial, uh, matching industrial fund.
Because we got a little over a million going after that salt building. Definitely, I remember it was like twenty point one, one point two.
There, there'll be some that may not be significant. Okay.
Because, you know, the, those three line items, you know, in the future, not this year, but in the future, that's what could be spent.
Just to let you guys know that we can't encumber any money unless we have an invoice, so it will be dumped into those.
Yeah, it's, I, I'm pretty sure Chris is gonna try to get those invoices, so it can get encumbered by the end of the year. Get it pushed after the March deadline to get it finished.
All right, any other comments, gentlemen? Anything from the audience? I'd entertain a motion to approve the payroll claims and to adjourn the meeting.
Still moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor say aye.